Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Harwich Planning Board on the Town Hall in Griffin Room. And this is Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. I would like to think that everybody in this room understands the significance of today, 17 years after the event in New York City. So if we can just take a brief moment to think about 9/11. Okay, thank you all very much for that. As I call this meeting to order, I'd like everyone to know that recording and taping is a notification that has to occur at the start of the meeting. It's required by law. The town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair.
I'm gonna be audio recording it. Ellen Gillan.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. So, on the agenda tonight, we have a matter of public hearings. The first one is PB 2018-30, Emulus E. Hall. At all as owner, C Street Production, Salt Block Food Truck, Douglas Ramler as applicant, seeks approval of a use regulation special permit pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-13, Paragraph 432A, to operate a mobile food vending operation for property located at 346 Route 28, MAP 21 Parcel N1 in the CV District. This is a continuation from 9/14/18.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I would like to make just a technical correction. I think this is a continuation from 8/14.
Oh, it is from 8/14.
It is.
Yes, because we haven't got to 9/14, 2018.
No, we haven't, unless we do a time warp then.
Well, that may be possible, Charlene.
It could be.
But my recollection is that we started this hearing in August 14.
Yes.
And actually, I have it right on the card.
You're correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're sorry for that oversight. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, today I did receive an email from the applicants of Salt Block's food truck requesting withdrawal without prejudice of our request to obtain a special permit at tonight's, they say Board of Appeals, but it's Planning Board. We have closed our food truck for the 2018 season. So they are seeking a withdrawal without prejudice of the application. If they do decide they want to go to another location, they will have to apply again for that location.
Move to allow withdrawal without prejudice.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Can we have discussion first?
Discussion, please, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask, and maybe Charlene can help with this, is the fact that they were in the location that is the subject of the application, and they had been there all summer, is there anything that we need to do sort of retroactively?
There really, there really isn't.
Okay.
When they moved to that new site, they actually applied at the same time. As you may recall, back on August 14th, they were extremely busy and were not able to attend. So the fact that if they had not made application at all, I think we would have some grave concerns. But they made application, so they're good. If they are going to go to a different location next summer, they already know that they are gonna have to, you know, get a special permit from this board prior to locating in that spot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion from the board? Charlene, any other comments?
I have nothing.
Any comments from the audience? Anyone?
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
So I think we need to vote the motion.
Vote the motion.
Move to withdraw without prejudice.
All in.
Yeah, just reiterate, yes.
Okay, I had second.
Twice we did it.
Okay, whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? Okay, the next, the next item we have is the issue of PB 2018-32, Ty Cronin and John Dougherty as applicants. William Crowell is representing them, Drive-O-Rama Inc. as owner. The application with waiver seeks approval for a mixed-use special permit via construction of a three-bay garage slash storage with apartment above and site plan review special permit pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325 to 327, Part C-51M and 55 and Article 5 Use Regulations. The property location is at 211 Route 28, MAP 11, Parcel X2-B in the C-H1 and R-H1, a de minimis portion zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Wood here this evening, representing Drive-O-Rama Inc. I have an authorization letter on file with the, with the board. Also representing Ty Cronin seated here to my right, and John Dougherty, who's not present. Drive-O-Rama Inc. is the owner of the property presently. They're under purchase and sale agreement to sell this property to Mr. Cronin and Mr. Dougherty contingent upon the issuance of a mixed-use special permit by this board. I also have seated with me Dan Croto from Moran Engineering, who has prepared the plans and calculations for you. Just to review briefly the subject matter of the special permit request this evening, this is a request for a special permit for a mixed-use development by this board to allow for 100% commercial use of the existing building currently known as the Mills Store for retail business. What kind, I believe it's gonna be fishing store for retail sales of fishing equipment. Also, the construction of a building to the rear of the lot shown on your plot plans that will have a three-bay garage with an apartment, residential apartment above. The storage bays will be used for the landscaping equipment, to store landscaping, landscaping equipment by Mr. Cronin, but his business itself will be conducted off premises. The requirement under the mixed-use development bylaw is that the commercial use of the floor area of the buildings dedicated to commercial use has to be at least 33%. The former Mills Store, which is where the retail sales establishment, establishment will be located, will be 100% dedicated to commercial use. That requirement also is that, that commercial use be at the front of the building, facing Route 28 and on the ground level, which it will be, just like the Mills Store was. The requirement also under the mixed-use bylaw is that the lot contained at least 10,000 square feet per residential unit. We have one residential unit, and the lot has more than 10,000 square feet to meet that requirement. The parking requirements, landscaping, screening, and the like are all addressed on the site plan prepared by Moran Engineering, as well as the, the letter submitted by Moran Engineering regarding the, I'll call it the sight line of the driveway, when you come in and out of the proposed driveway on Grayneck Road. You should all have a copy of that with all of the technical calculations. I'll defer to Mr. Croto if you have any questions concerning that. So the petitioner's position this evening is that it, the corporation, Drive-O-Rama Inc., has met the requirements of 325-51M of the bylaw for a mixed-use development, a special permit, for the reasons that I just itemized. And the petitioner argues that there will be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and incidentally, there will be no, by Mr. Cronin, there would be no storage of supplies on the premises. And as far as intensity of the use, I would argue that it's a, it's a fairly light intensity. He would be garaging his trucks in the, in the bays in the evening, the end of the day, and exiting the property at the beginning of the day, and as I said earlier, not conducting business from the site in terms of customer contact, an office, things of that nature. There's no provision for an office in that building. The apartment above would be rented to a tenant. So I don't think it's, it's a very intensive use. So there would be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, not just doing immediate a butter, and not just some detriment, but the, the argument has to be it would be a substantial detriment. And we're, of course, taking the position that it would not be a substantial detriment. It's an appropriate location for the use, it's in a CH1 zone. There would be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians or people as a result of the special permit being granted. There are adequate and appropriate facilities for the proposed mixed use as outlined on the plans in front of you. So we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening and the administrative waiver, the waiver regarding the drainage calculations as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charlene, are there any comments?
I didn't know if Dan maybe wanted to go through the plan at all, or do you want me to go through the staff report? I'm happy to do whichever.
Makes sense to go through the staff report.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. I did review the application and actually worked very well with the applicant. I had submitted a letter to them showing some additional information. They got that to me in a very timely manner. So at this point, what you see before you this evening does meet all the standards under the zoning bylaw and the rules and regulations. But I will go through my comments. Engineering, town engineer did perform his own drainage calculations as he was originally concerned with the proposal. He found that the proposed retention area is adequate to handle. The runoff for all storms up to 100 years. The new development will raise the grade at the south portion of the lot about 2.5 feet. Therefore, there will be a 10-foot, there will be 10 feet of grassy area, drainage area to the south and west of the lot. The runoff from the grass areas are generally insignificant, and the adjacent lots are graded such that if there is periodic ponding during or after a significant storm, it would be concentrated at the property line and would quickly infiltrate into the soil. The submitted drainage calculations show that the dry wells are adequate to handle the runoff from the existing proposed roof. So therefore, the engineer is, does feel that the request for the drainage waiver is appropriate. Fire department had no concerns. They actually thought this was a great project. The police department said from a public safety and criminal justice perspective, they have no issues with the proposal, provided that the line of sight leading from Grayneck Road looks west on Route 28 remains clear of obstruction. And that was addressed by the letter from Dan Croto. I always say your name wrong, Dan.
Croto.
Thank you. Everybody butchers mine, I butcher his. Conservation, they will need to file for conservation because the property is located, believe it or not, entirely in a flood zone.
Yep.
Health, this site is currently served by SESPUL and will require a new septic system to be designed to accommodate the proposed use. Any new use beyond the retail use will require the septic system to be fully compliant with all state and local regulations. The building department, building permit will be required. Two means of egress from the dwelling unit is required. Primary means of egress cannot be through the garage. On both of those matters, the applicant has been meeting with the Board of Health, or the Health Director, as well as the Building Commissioner, to address those concerns. Not a concern for, for this board, so that should not be a problem. And Highway Department had no concern. Regarding my comments, the existing building on the property will be continued to be used for retail sales. The property is completely within a FEMA flood zone, elevation AE11. The new building will be required to be built to proper building code and FEMA standards. This should not be an issue or a concern. The applicant is working with the Building Commissioner and the second means of egress. Butters were notified via certified mail on August 21st. Administrative and filing requirements have been met. Staff does recommend approval of the waiver requested, and standard conditions are recommended and are noted in the draft motion.
Anything else, Charlene?
I have nothing else. Oh, green cards, thank you.
Okay, are there any comments on this project from the Planning Board? Any questions?
Okay, I just have one question, which is more of a clarification. I'm assuming from the comment that you made that there'll be no sort of landscaping material stored outside the building on the property.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mulch, no peystone.
No mulch, no trees ready to be planted, no gravel, no, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a follow-up to that question, you spoke about materials. What about other landscaping equipment? Will there be any outside storage? I know in the three bays, it's planned to be trucks and equipment, but is there any plan for outside storage of? No, no plan to store landscaping equipment outside the building.
Okay. I noticed that there is a curb cut currently to the west of the existing building, but when I was out there the other day taking a look, it's got a chain across that. Doesn't look like it was used by the other previous retail shop. Will that be maintained? Or is there any plan to make, make that an exit?
On Route 28?
On Route, going, yeah, egressing onto 28 on the west side of the building, the existing building.
The current proposal would have that open as a, as an exit only.
Okay, so that will be.
So down on Grayneck Road will be.
The entrance.
Enter and exit, because it's 50 foot wide or so down there, but, but up on the northwest side would be exit only.
Is there any concern, does the Planning Board have any jurisdiction there? Is there any concern about that curb cut, which currently isn't used?
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
It's an existing curb cut, whether it's been used or not, it is existing, it has been vetted by Mass DOT, so it's, it's good to go.
Not an issue. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public attending this? If you could sign in, please, and give us your name and address, we would appreciate.
I'm Peggy Rose, 87, Grayneck Road, and I'm just a touch confused. The, the sole sign is on the vacant lot, you know, on the other side of Grayneck. Are you folks buying both parcels?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, answer that?
Please, please.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Actually, it's, the property across the street, Peggy?
Yeah.
Is actually purchased by Anchor Marine, and they received approval to do boat storage.
All right. All right, I am no longer confused, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, thank you for speaking up, that's fine. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sure.
Hi, yes, my name is Scott Golding. I'm an attorney from Drow and Tacho Morgan &amp; Hingham, representing Ben and Morgan Petroni, who are the owners of 110 Grayneck Road, which is the property that's directly behind from Route 28. They were unable to be here tonight due to a prior commitment, so they asked me to attend on their behalf and, you know, take a look at the application. So I think, from an overall standpoint, they've got some concerns with regards to, you know, where the building is sited. It's as far back from the street and as far back in the corner of the lot as it can be to the residential neighborhood. There's a lot of open driveway area they're concerned about. I'd be interested, and I'll pose this to the chairman to ask the applicant once I'm done, you know, for more information on the overall operation of the landscaping business within that, within those three new garage bays, you know, hours of operation, how many vehicles can be anticipated to be going, you know, to the, to the new building on a daily basis? Will employees be coming to the site to get on those trucks? How many employees would there be? I know there's a noise ordinance about general landscaping, which, you know, no landscaping equipment prior to 7:00 AM. Well, so I'm hoping, you know, if the board were to do that, we would kind of delve down deeper into some of those issues to kind of figure out, you know, and control whatever use is there. With regards to, to stormwater, I know the town engineer looked at it and felt okay with it. One of the issues that I kind of picked up on, and is required in the special permit, is you've got the public, public access area. Essentially, you're taking the low point of the lot, you're raising it up to 7.5, and you're adding a new building in that area. Then you have a drainage swale that's, you know, around like 4.5 or 5, and then that, it's a very small, the, the area at elevation 5 is actually a very large area. The drainage swale itself is actually a very small drainage swale. And then that other kind of greened area, including the public area, I'd be interested to hear what the engineer has to say, but those elevations are in the 5 range, so I'm just wondering if that's acting as, you know, a de facto, you know, overflow area, if your public access area is actually just kind of a de facto overflow part of the drainage swale, so. Other questions about kind of the operation and use? I mean, is this gonna, is the tenant that's gonna be there? I understand it's a one-bedroom apartment from looking at the plan, but is this, is this gonna be kind of a year-round tenant? Is this gonna be associated with, you know, workers that are part of the landscape business? Is there gonna be some sort of, you know, maximum occupancy? I'm not sure if that's a Board of Health or Building Department issue, but, you know, I've worked landscape in the past as a summer job and, you know, pile a bunch of people into an apartment and, you know, work hard for the summer. So they're just, I think, concerned about that. Also, as just a, a threshold issue on this mixed use, I question whether, and I don't believe in my interpretation of the bylaw, that landscaping, storage of landscaping equipment is a permitted use in this zone. So the, the definition of construction industry within the bylaw, and I'll read only the relevant portions, states a premises which is used by a landscaper for the storage of supplies or equipment. And based on your, your use table, that's not allowed within the CH1 zone. So I'm not sure, a mixed-use special permit is not gonna help you if the, you know, the commercial use is not an allowed use within that zone. So I, I think that's really a threshold issue for this application.
Okay. So Mr. Golding, let me repeat, just to make sure we've got everything, right? You're concerned about the hours? You're concerned about the number of employees and their vehicles? Correct. You're concerned that it's a one-bedroom apartment, and you'd like to know whether or not it's year-round? And you're also questioning the mixed-use permit in the zone, right? So, as well as the swale? So those are all fair questions, and?
Could I add a couple, at least you wanna? Just noise, there, just to confirm, there'll be no, you know, operation of any equipment there, no maintenance or repair of, no working on equipment there, inside or outside.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
And then just, what type of plantings are gonna be there? Are there gonna be small shrubs? You know, the existing conditions plan has a, had a significant amount of mature trees there. There's a, if you've been by the property, there's a pretty significant canopy there. You know, I think it provides a buffer for all of those residential neighbors that are behind Route 28, obviously a very busy road. So I'd be interested in, you know, if some more enhanced buffer could be there, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowell, would anyone from your team like to respond?
Give me a moment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, a one-bedroom apartment is only allowed to have two occupants.
Two occupants.
Furniture, furniture, I mean, I got a lot of stuff.
How was the operation, and when do you think it'd be there?
7:30?
Come back at 5:00 or 6:00? So, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Crowell, one of the things that Charlene commented on is, by rule, a one-bedroom apartment may have two tenants. You know that?
Well, a bedroom, and, and the code, I believe, allows for couples.
Yeah.
So you could have two people sleeping in one bed.
Yes.
So it's not.
Two people.
Two people.
Yes.
Two people, but since it's one bedroom, it's not saying you can only have one person residing there. You could have two.
Two, sure.
That's what I said.
That's what I thought I heard, but I stand corrected.
So that's your limit right there.
Yes.
Right.
So as I said at the outset, Mr. Cronin does not, there's no plans to operate a business at that site. It's a garage, storage bays for his one truck and his landscaping equipment, right? There's not a business going on, housing of a vehicle and equipment. As far as hours of operation, like any landscaper in the, in the, in season, you're talking about 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but that's not year-round. That's in the busy seasons. He would not be maintaining or repairing his equipment, anything major like that, but when the statement was made of operating equipment, well, you have to start to truck up to exit the property, and, and so there's going to be some vehicle noise there. But the, the lawnmower would be at the site of the customer.
Yes.
Not, not at this site. As far as the, the sighting of the building on the lot, it has to do, I would defer to Mr. Croto somewhat on that, but it has to do with the septic system as shown on the plan, and we have to be 25 feet from zoning, from a zoning standpoint, 25 feet from Grayneck Road. The bylaw also talks about having to be 10 feet from the side and rear, so it doesn't leave much room when you factor in a parking lot for the retail business and the one or two people that might be in the residential apartment all need parking, and it makes sense to have that in between the two buildings, in my mind, and not all the parking at the rear, because that may inhibit the, the residential sales out front on Route 28. And you want to have it so that when people turn into Grayneck Road, they can see that there's a parking area right there and not, hey? there's a parking area right there and not, hey, where, what's going on, where do we go? So that's why it's been sited where it is. I don't know yet, we don't know yet whether it would be a year-round tenant, all depends on what the market bears, something like that, might be seasonal, might be year-round, but the town planner weighed in on a one-bedroom apartment, so we can't be piling employees that he doesn't have into the apartment anyway.
Right.
Is there any plans to expand? Ty's been in business for quite some time and hasn't expanded yet. Solo practitioner like myself. What type of plantings that, I'll let Mr. Crotto address that, but before he does, I think that the mixed-use bylaw, Attorney Golding mentioned a threshold concern, mixed-use is not defined in our bylaw. When you look in the definitions, it's not defined what a mixed-use is. I think it's within the latitude or purview of this board to have the discretion to grant a special permit for this type of use, that maybe it doesn't fall neatly within any particular category of the table of uses. I think the closest category would be garage, storage, commercial garage or storage, or parking. There's commercial parking going on here, there's, it's, in, in, in essence, a commercial garage, because he would be parking commercial vehicles there, but not conducting a business on the site. So I think it's within this board's discretion to grant a special permit for this type of use, and from what Mr. Cronin tells me, try to find a place where you can store equipment like this, especially on Route 28. I think this site makes sense for this type of use, mixed-use, and I, I think that you also could argue that the storage bays are part of the residential unit that is above them. You can have a garage that's accessory to a residential structure, so I think that argument can be made, or that it's a commercial storage bay or garage under the table of uses. So those, the threshold, that's how I would address the threshold question. Mr. Crotto, as far as what, plantings are envisioned?
Talking about the plantings and drainage.
Plantings, drainage, and I think swale was mentioned, Mr. Crotto.
Plantings were, we were only removing the trees that were necessary. It's not a heavily tree lot, it had been, I think, places for them to display sheds. Ty being, he is a, he's a one-person landscaper right now, one, his company is him.
Yeah.
There's only one parking spot outside for the company, so if, if we were to go over our parking schedule, then the neighbors could certainly send him back to the board. There's two spots for the apartment, because as an apartment unit, you need 1.5 spots per unit.
Yes.
Let's throw this into the two spots, so there's only one outside parking spot. So everything, everything, storage and equipment-wise, he knows needs to go inside because of the district. Drainage-wise, the, this was, right now, the lot slowly slopes towards the residential areas. Because it's in the floodplain, the idea was to bring the grade up on this, the building area three feet, and then you'd have three feet of the buildings actually in the floodplain, so you couldn't have any utilities within that three feet. That works. It works for a garage, you put in flood vents. So it's coming up three feet, what it's doing is it's actually taking any, any stormwater drainage that's flowing now towards these residential, towards the south, and it'll, it'll be going to the north. Now, the whole parking area is stone. When you go to the town's bylaw on, on drainage off of stone, it's similar to drainage off of, off of...
Sealed surface.
Well, no, pervious, actually, off of what's there now.
Yep.
It's slightly above that. The existing building, we're not changing anything drainage-wise, except for taking the whole area that's now roof, which, which obviously there's no, there's no, it goes right onto the pavement and then down, we're taking that whole area and putting it underground. So we're improving the area that's now developed with parking. When we get to the area, which would be Ty's brother-in-law, I believe, his shop, and then Ty's, the place that he's looking at, working with, is, the whole area would be stone, the, again, the, anything that's roof is gonna, that'll go to the, to underground drainage, that's all size, that, those calculations, size for 25 years strong.
Yeah.
I think, I think it was four and a half inches an hour, which is, which is obviously a large storm.
Yeah.
The idea then, even, is stone being slightly less pervious than what's there for grade, what's there now, we're going, we're going to slope that towards the planted drainage swale here.
Yeah.
And as the town engineer verified, that gives us plenty of, plenty of storage in that area. The supposed, the landscape public area, it's gonna be more of a, you know, a showpiece and gathering spot as part of the requirement and zoning, but it will stay, it obviously will stay as landscaping. I have just general grass and plants, I mean, the owner being a landscaper, I'd almost defer to him as to what type of plants. In between the residential and the commercial use anyways, you have to have a six-foot fence, so we have that going on. We're removing what's the chain link fence sections and putting in, putting in stockade fence, something a lot better looking. The septic system itself goes to the highest part of the lot and, and out of the way the most possible, with a fence going all the way around it on, on the public side and the residential side, so that's hidden as, as much as possible. So there is an advantage of taking this old, the old building out front that's on cesspools, adding that to the, to a decent septic system. But again, flows, and the flow for this, the use, the use for this, Ty being, you know, a single landscaper and, you know, one-unit apartment, it's a pretty modest use of the property, and pretty modest, you know, in the way of septic systems too. If the septic system is in that southeast corner, you know, I mean, it, it looks, all septic's look large now, but it's not, it's not a very, it's not a very large septic system at all. It's a retail garage and one-bedroom.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, further comment I wanted to make as far as the intensity of the use is that I think this is a much less intensive use than what could be there, because that mill store could be expanded fairly significantly for a much more intensive retail, commercial building with a lot more traffic in and out than what would result from this use.
Yeah. Mr. McParland?
Just one brief question. What are you gonna, you're obviously gonna put your equipment in the, what you call a proposed multi-use building, but the existing building, what are you gonna use that for?
The, the mill store building is gonna be a retail fishing store.
Fishing store.
Oh, you said that, and I didn't, I got confused. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone?
The question was raised about noise associated with the use. Is this a location where the landscaping equipment, mowers, maybe dethatcher, aerator, things like that would be stored and maintained? So that would be, you know, blade sharpening, oil changing, things like that going on in the building?
The, the intention is to store them there.
Where will they be maintained then?
I'll let you answer that.
Well, I mean, the lawnmowers and stuff like that, I mean, they go to be serviced.
Pardon?
We don't service them, I don't service it myself.
Okay.
I bring it somewhere to be serviced.
Yeah. You bring in someone, or you take it to?
No, I bring, I bring it somewhere.
Okay, you take it somewhere, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
A question about halfway through the property, there's an existing chain link, it says it's gonna be replaced with post and rail fence.
Stockade.
And there is a gate in the chain link fence, is that gate going to be maintained in the post and rail, so there'll be movement of vehicles between the two businesses, if you want?
The idea, no, but, but he wants, but they will leave a gate there for some, they are, it is, they are family members, the, the store and entire family members. If they needed full access, if there was some big delivery going to the retail store, then they would be able to open that, you know, be, you know, once a month thing for an hour, but we're gonna maintain that gate.
Okay.
This is to be, this is a partnership between Ty and his brother-in-law. Brother-in-law wants the fishing to store, and Ty wants to store his equipment.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. Charlene, anything from your side?
I have nothing.
Okay, why don't we move...
This gentleman.
Nope.
Move to oppose the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. The property is located primarily within the CH1 zoning district. Two, a de minimis portion of the property is located within the RH1 zoning district. Three, the site is currently being used for retail sales. Four, the parking as proposed, as proposed is adequate for the existing and proposed uses of the property. Five, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water, based on the town engineer's review. Six, the use is allowable with special permit and it is consistent with the zoning code. Seven, there will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. Eight, the property is located within the FEMA flood zone AEE111. Nine, the existing access of Route 28 and Grayneck Road remain, and a new access for the new building is proposed on Grayneck Road. Ten, the waivers required do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Move to approve the waivers as requested, based on the fact that the waiver does not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw. One, submit, submittal of full drainage calculations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, excuse me, matter of protocol, any discussion? Board? Charlene?
I've got nothing.
Okay.
Go.
Go.
Move to approve case number...
No, we have to vote.
We have to vote.
We have to vote.
We have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Move to approve, approve case number PB 2018-32. Ty Cronin and John Doherty is applicants, care of William Crowe Esquire, Drive-O-Rama Inc. as owners for a mixed-use special permit via construction of a three-bay garage slash storage with apartment above pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-7C, and Article 5 use regulations for property located at 211 Route 28, MAP 11, parcel X2-B, based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Discussion, any? Vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries.
And finally, a move to approve with conditions, case number PB 2018-32. Ty Cronin and John Doherty is applicants, care of William Crowe Esquire, Drive-O-Rama Inc. as owner for a site plan review special permit for the construction of a three-bay garage storage with apartment above in creation of additional parking pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 32555, for property located at 211 Route 28, MAP 11, parcel X2B, and the CH1 and RH1, a de minimis portion zoning districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, and with the following conditions opposed relative to the site plan review. One, lighting and signage shall conform to the zoning code. Two, the site plan, special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Three, the site upon completion shall be inspected and signed off by the town planner or a designated planning board member. And four, any change to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, were you voting on those?
Yes.
So it was six, six zero on each of those?
Six, correct. If I was not voting, believe me, you do.
You know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
The next applicant is actually next door at the Board of Health.
Should we take a brief moment?
Or you can go on to the minutes and the, under public meeting, if you wanted to do that.
Is it okay to go out of order?
Absolutely.
Okay, if it's okay with the board? Okay, let's, let's move on then to Part V, public hearing, new business. First one is minutes.
Move to adopt the minutes of August 14th, 2018.
Second.
Move to approve, I guess.
Move to approve the minutes, yes. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention?
One abstention.
One abstention?
Yeah.
Okay, 5, 0, 1. Correct? Okay. All right? Thank you, the next. Could we, could we please just, if you'd like to have a discussion, I'd ask you politely to, to just go outside, so we can continue. So the next, we have the advisory opinions. We have two of them this evening, one is the zoning board of appeals from September, or for September 26, 2018. Is there a review of those items needed? There are a number of them.
Mr. Chairman, I think the, the best way to proceed on this is, they were distributed to members of the planning board. If you just ask the members of the board if any of them have any concern with any of the items on either agenda, and if not, then I think we can move on.
Yeah, okay, that, that speeds it up. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Are there any concerns by any members of the planning board?
I don't have any concerns, Mr. Chairman, except to point out that, and I was gonna say something in our last meeting.
Yeah.
Seems to me that they're redoing the whole campgrounds. I mean, there's...
Every, every time we...
Every, there's, there's at least two or three buildings in the campgrounds down there.
Yeah.
Nothing, you know, as long as, as long as it passed, it is what it is, but I just would comment on that.
Any other comments? The zone, okay, any, any comments on the, any other issue? Zoning board, historic district? Okay, the next item is zoning amendment discussion, preliminary discussion on possible amendments to bring to the May 2019 town meeting, included but not limited to the floodplain, assigned code, and accessory apartments.
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention a few things that I'm gonna be working on and possibly, hopefully, bring forward to you all. First and foremost, it's... First and foremost is floodplain. We've discovered that we have applicants who, um, are needing to elevate their homes because of the flood, floodplain. These are existing homes.
Correct.
And because they may have to elevate the house five feet, it's exceeding the, um, height requirement. That's really not what zoning is intended to do, to restrict somebody from complying with, um, another law. So one of the things that I think we're going to be looking at to make it easier for an applicant is for existing homes, not new construction. But for existing homes that need to be elevated up to meet floodplain, um, standards that we have a, uh, a, a pass, let's say, that they don't need to go to the zoning board of appeals as long as it's meeting the building code, as long as they're not raising it up 18 feet, you know, to get a view or something. They're raising it to that minimum, um, height that they need to, which is one foot above base flood elevation, which is called freeboard. So, um, it's one thing that we're looking at to try and ease up people, you know, when they do have to make changes, um, to comply with, uh, floodplain requirements.
Charlene, is that so they can get flood insurance?
Part of it is so that they can either get flood insurance if they don't already have it, but also to help lower their flood insurance rates. Flood insurance is extremely expensive and the higher you are at or above base flood elevation, your, the price of flood insurance actually goes down dramatically. So some people are looking towards actually lifting their homes up to try and give themselves a break on, you know, over the course of 20 years. Instead of paying $200,000 a year of the course of 20 years for flood insurance, they may only be paying, I don't know, $10,000.
I bet some of those people down in South Carolina wish they had picked them up.
Well, actually, all the new, it's funny you mention that, if we can digress a little bit. Um, when I was watching the news this morning and they were showing the new buildings that were there since Hugo went through, those are all built to flood standards. And if you look at them, they're really up there, but they're still, it'll be interesting, funny, sorry, the right word, ironic.
Yeah.
It's going to be interesting to see what happens, um, you know, down there with all these newer buildings that have been built since Hugo and how they're going to be impacted.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. I think you said that the intent of the zoning bylaws not to penalize somebody that's trying to do that.
Right.
As long as the end result is still within the building code. What would happen if the raising put them over?
Well, that's what we're talking about. So if you have a building now that is at 25 feet, let's say.
Right.
And you have to raise it up, let's say, six feet.
Right.
You're now at 31 feet, you're above the height. So what we want to look at doing is actually give them a pass and say, because you need to elevate this to meet flood standards, you're okay. If it's new construction.
Right.
You need to build to the 30 feet. You can design a house that's going to comply.
Yeah, but if the, if that first, um, situation you described puts them at not 31, but 39 or 42, where do we, uh, is there anywhere where we stop and say, okay, you know, we understand you're not doing this for any other reason than to get it above flood zone? Is there some new max?
I'm not, I'm not really sure that we can do a new max. If, if somebody is, um, and we don't, thankfully, we don't have that many.
I wouldn't think we would.
In this community, we really don't. But the application you just saw, um, you know, that's entirely in the floodplain. And there are a number of buildings along there that are realizing, we're in the floodplain. And two had to go to the zoning board of appeals. One, I think, is like at 33 feet and the other is only like at 31 feet. So they're not extraordinary. But some of these houses are big, older homes.
Right.
That were built in the 1800s and they may be already higher.
You could end up getting forty feet.
Exactly, exactly.
So in that situation, they would then have to come before the, even though we're.
I don't think so.
We don't know.
I don't think so. I think we have to, you know, just say, if that's what you need to do to raise it up.
That's what you need to do.
That's what you need to do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Um, very, do you want me to just keep going while we're at this?
Yes, let's.
Because the applicant's representative is not, oh, he is in here. Whatever you'd like to do.
Let's, let's finish this portion and then we'll go back.
For the sign code, as you know, there have been issues with the A-frame signs, um, primarily in Harwichport, but frankly, all over.
Yeah.
We don't have a good bylaw relative to what is required or not required for A-frame signs. Technically, they're not required, they're not allowable. But people do them. The rule of thumb has been you can have one as long as it's on your own property, but we need to have that really spelled out. So I've actually reached out through the master planners list serve to see what other communities have for bylaws. Some really good bylaws out there. So that's something I'm going to be working on. And accessory apartments, I know some of you are going to go, oh, when I say this, but, um, there, I think, is a real necessity, um, whether this board sponsors it or whether the board of selectmen sponsors it, um, to allow for certain accessory apartments by right and not by special permit. If it's within an existing, um, structure, it's already, you know, it's already assigned for, it's a finished basement or what have you. You're not expanding or building a new structure accessory, you know, the thought is those should be allowed to be done by right. If it's an accessory structure, the thought is, yeah, that still needs a special permit. So that's something else that I'm going to be working on.
Okay.
If there are, and there's some, some housekeeping things that I'll be bringing forward over the next couple of months too. But if there are things that you all have been thinking of that need to be addressed, let me know. You know, you don't need to do it as a board, I think if there are things that you have thoughts on, definitely let me know, can start looking at those things.
Okay. Is there any old business, Charlene, that we need to?
I have none.
Joe?
Just one small piece. Uh, I'm the board's representative on the capital outlay committee.
Yep.
And, uh, I got an email today that we're going to be back in business over the next, I think we start next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Not until the 25th.
Okay.
Two weeks. I'm, I'm your recording secretary for that.
All right. I, I, I put it in my diary and I forgot to bring my diary with me.
Yeah.
But in, in any event, if, I, I'm the board's representative, if anybody has anything they'd like to do at capital outlay, give me a call and I'd be more than glad to represent your interest in regard to that. Mostly what we do is we look at things over $500,000 expenditures.
Yes.
And we, part of the, the way we've been doing it, um, has been, we do like a five-year plan, isn't it?
Seven-year plan, it's actually, you look at things over $50,000.
$50,000, yeah. And, uh, frankly, with, since Chris has been the administrator, has made our life a lot easier. He has it all done and put together for us and we just have to go through it and agree or disagree or whatever, but.
Sure.
It's been all, as compared to the way it used to be when we were struggling.
Yes. Anything else? Go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to make a comment with regard to what Joe has just said in that, uh, last year, we had put in front of the capital outlay committee a request for $200,000 for.
And you've done it again this year.
Uh, and so what I would like to ask Joe as our representative to be an advocate for that.
$200,000 for?
For a consultant to begin the master plan process.
Oh, okay.
It's called the local comprehensive plan in.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it's called, but I, I would just like to ask Joe to be an advocate for that, uh, that one item.
Seems to me, if I remember correctly, the chairman of capital outlay and I went sort of hammers and thongs over that and he didn't, he doesn't agree that we should have that money, but I'll, I'll go back in there fighting.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
And we will try and get grants.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
If there's anything out there.
If there's anything out there, yeah, anything we can do to get that process started.
Okay. Anything else, Charlene, under old business?
I have nothing.
Okay. Uh, if it's okay with the board, could we move to briefings and reports by board members? Are there any?
I gave mine.
Anything?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, the Community Preservation Committee will, uh, meet, uh, Thursday to review existing applications. There will be a public hearing, um, with regard to the use of community preservation funds. I think that's going to be a week from this coming Thursday.
The 13th and the 20th.
Right, so that would be a week from this coming Thursday. And then in October, we will start a review of all applications submitted.
Okay.
How much money you got?
Uh, I, I would have to ask our chairman, I know offhand right now, but I'm sure, I, I know that was one of our concerns, that our chairman had to get a better hand on exactly how much money we had available.
Any other comments on, um, any or any other briefings, reports by any board members? Okay. So if I, if I may redirect us to PB 2018-33. Heirs of Mark Nickerson et al. and Robbins Family Trust.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Thad Eldridge with East Southeast, representing the heirs of Mark Nickerson and the Robbins Family Trust. We have submitted a definitive subdivision plan for your review.
I did do some stuff up on the.
Okay.
That helps.
That's great. So, um, we had a preliminary subdivision plan approved by the planning board with a few comments. And we have requested a few waivers and also a special permit. Can I give you a moment if you want to pass out papers?
I'd like to.
No worries. Quite all right.
Thank you. And you're, Mr. Parity.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Parity, I'd, I'd like to make.
Actually, this is Mr. Eldridge.
You're Mr. Eldridge.
I do my best to be, yes.
Yeah, you try. Before we get started.
Sure.
If I may. You know, I am doing my best as the chair of this planning committee to make sure that we listen to everyone and listen carefully because it's our job to do the best we can for you and this community. So what I would ask is if there are any issues in the future, right? I'd like you to bring them to our attention by following the protocol, which would be to direct those issues to the town planner. And, and certainly, I welcome everybody to come and speak at the planning board meeting. But I would also ask you to respectfully, respectfully adhere to protocol. I'm approachable, I think everybody on this board is approachable, but let's do it the right way. Are there any comments from the board? Okay? Your name, please?
Brian Parity.
Stand up and introduce yourself and give us your address.
Sure, my name is Brian Parity, 26 Echo Woods Road.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not sure in what context that, um, that comment is being made. I did send you an email directly this afternoon with some questions.
Yeah.
That I thought would be helpful for the board.
Yeah.
To look at and prepare for. If there's another protocol, um, that I should have followed, I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know where on the website, protocols are published for the public.
It's, it's a matter of getting, look, I don't mind you sending me anything, but the first thing I did, rather than respond.
Yep.
Is send it to Charlene Greenall, our, our town plan.
Sure, okay, fine.
That's, that's what I would like to have happen.
Okay. Fine.
Doesn't mean we won't listen and we're, we're going to listen.
I, I didn't expect any answers, all I'd, all I'd, because we planned to come here tonight to ask these questions. I sent those in advance, um, so that you all had the information, hopefully giving you enough prep time to, um, to put some answers together.
Yeah.
If not, we can, we can, you know, discuss it as we go.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay.
All right.
Please.
So, um, the basic overview, we're looking at a five-lot subdivision. We've gone with a cluster subdivision because we are within NHESP habitat for Eastern Box Turtle.
Can I, Thad, can you explain what the acronym stands for? Not everybody understands that.
You're testing me, I think.
I am.
The Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program.
Okay.
It's through mash, mass, fish and wildlife. And they receive reports on endangered species, then they determine what is the extent or what is the likely extent of those endangered species. And then they produce a map. Any permit within an NHESP estimated or priority habitat of endangered species.
Yeah.
A, a permit needs to go through them first from a building permit subdivision or any development plan. In this case, we have applied with the NHESP. We have been working with them for exactly one year today. And the, um, it may be well-known that Bill Devine, who is the trustee of the Robbins Family Realty Trust, is, according to the assessor, the owner of 22 acres out here. Under the NHESP rules, that becomes a segmented project and every property gets combined together into one review. We've had a preliminary review. Mr. Devine would very much like to own all 22 acres, but his title is very fragmented. This was all owner unknown property. He's done his best to piece together the title. He's gotten the Robbins family, he's found the heirs of Mark Nickerson. The Ethel Eldridge Trust to the south is a, um, is a big mess. The Baker Parcel to the north, they might have resolved, but still unknown. And there's a weak family parcel to the north that his name is associated with as well. Because of this, the, this permit becomes part of a more comprehensive permit through the natural heritage group.
Yeah.
And there are thresholds that can be met. For example, if he develops more than five acres or if in the future anybody with these properties develops more than five acres, they could be subject to the MEPA review, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Agency. And that would be in the form of an environmental notification form. So, while the NHESP is prepared to provide us with a no-take letter for this subdivision, they will not issue that until the final wording is completed on a letter to be signed by Mr. Devine and by Mr. Aaron's, who represents the, the Mark Nickerson, or heirs of Mark Nickerson. And that letter specifically states that these properties are combined together for the NHESP purposes through that segmentation. It was a mouthful.
Okay.
So with that, we have a five-lot cluster subdivision that the planning board had requested the shared driveway. To reduce the number of curb cuts and the results of the concern of stockpiling snow. We have created a triple shared driveway where lot three will enjoy a, a loop over lots four and lots two. And in the front of lot three, we have a shared parking area in the summer and a snow disposal area in the winter. The Board of Health was just very positive regarding the proposal and their approval will come shortly. And incidentally, this does have to be continued, we're expecting till the 25th. The, um, the following three items are still outstanding. So, as I said, the Board of Health was very positive, but their approval needs to come through before you can endorse the plan. The NHESP, their approval is supposed to come through this week. The letter will come, it will be endorsed. That is also a letter that will be recorded. And the open space and homeowner association documents are being drafted by the attorney this week and those will be submitted for review. So we're, um, seeking the approval of the open space residential development, uh, the shared driveway, the Panhandle lot and the definitive subdivision. We, uh, we did have one change, the periwinkle circle that we were enjoying, um, was not acceptable from the town. We proposed the alternative of blossom circle, which is not anywhere close to any of the other road names in town. We proposed the alternative of Blossom Circle, which is not anywhere close to any of the other road names in town. We are requesting the waivers for the sidewalks. The forty-foot layout that we have off of Periwinkle leaves little room for sidewalks and that entire development does not contain a sidewalk. We, the applicant is willing to grant easement rights to the general public to be able to access the relocated ancient way or cart path that currently goes through the site. The fifty-foot buffer requirement, we're requesting the waiver that we do not buffer to the property to the south, which is partially within the Ethel Eldridge Realty Trust. And that's very partially, it's owner unknown and open space land at this point that we would like that buffer, the buffer removed. We are maintaining the buffer, the fifty-foot buffer to the two developed properties to the east. So we have the open space. We are required to have a sixty percent open space under the NH ESP. And I know that this is a, the way we're segmenting this is one of the great questions that many of the people behind me have. Under the Harwich Regulation, we're required thirty percent open space minimum. And we can meet that with the open space that's to the north. To meet the sixty percent requirement, we have the open space that's to the west that fronts on Echo Woods Road. The property to the north, the landscape to the north is more suitable for turtle habitat. There's a southerly facing slope, which is a prime location for overwintering of the eastern box turtle. And it is also more contiguous with the open space being Thompson's Field and the Water Department property. The NH ESP is more interested in protecting that property for the turtles than they are protecting this property, which is really at a finger in between development. We are keeping an open space portion with the ability to revoke that open space status and develop it in the future. That will require Board of Health, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, since we'll be going through the Conservation Commission for our, our need restriction. And it will also require NH ESP approval at that time. Currently, my client does not enjoy rights within Echo Woods Road. If he gains rights within Echo Woods Road, there's the possibility of this development. If he doesn't gain rights within it, then he can't get there. At no time will we violate the town's requirement of forty thousand square feet per building site in the creation of a grid subdivision that would create conforming lots. And this is part of the plan that's been reviewed with the NH ESP, where we really looked at the entire area and said, what can we do out here and how can we minimize the impact upon these turtles? And the shared driveway is the special permit that we need, but again, that was at the request of the, of the planning board. So with that, I would open it to any questions from the board.
Charlene, do you have any?
I do. The town engineer did submit a, a one plus a little bit page memo. I'm not going to read this whole thing. It has been provided to the applicant. He did bring up a few concerns. I will let Thad address those. Building permits will obviously be required. Conservation did note that this does require additional permits and review of the NH ESP. Fire department has no concern. Highway department noted the snow removal easement of twenty-five feet at the back of the cul-de-sac. And all efforts to keep snow within this area will be made. It is not unreasonable to accept a snow pile to exceed the twenty-five feet if we have any significant snowstorm, especially since most of our residential roads are plowed with pickup trucks and one-ton trucks. One question would be, does the snow removal easement mean there's no driveway to lot three? I think he just didn't really see where it is. Also, how about the placement of a fire hydrant, which would typically go at the end of the main for flushing purposes? As to the question of the road name, other than not duplicating Periwinkle, Highway has no preference. Health department, as Thad just said, they had no preference for the other two options. I never got Blossom to them, but there is no, as Thad did reference, the Board of Health reviewed the application today and they'll be rendering their decision. My comments, the surveyor has provided an area for the piling of snow removal. The shared driveways have been designed to allow for this area. Just so the board is aware that you can find that in detail too on the subdivision plan sheet, one of seven. As the Board of Health has not yet rendered a decision on this definitive, the planning board cannot render a decision. Further, any Board of Health conditions and/or requirements will need to be noted on the definitive plan prior to any endorsement. Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program review and approval also needs to be received prior to the planning board rendering a decision. Thad has already mentioned this. The open space will be protected by homeowners association and Conservation Commission. The planning board will need to see these documents and accept it by the Conservation Commission prior to approval and/or endorsement. If we can get the homeowners association document for the meeting on the twenty-fifth, I think that's fine. He can always work out the covenant restriction with the Conservation Commission. The applicant is seeking four reviews. One is the open space residential development, which is a special permit. Second is a shared driveway, which is a special permit for alternative access. C is panhandle lot, which is required to go under the definitive subdivision. And then finally, the definitive subdivision. The waivers requested are reasonable, however, in lieu of constructing a sidewalk, an amount will need to be determined for the cost of the construction of a sidewalk and the applicant will pay in lieu of performance, an amount equivalent to the cost of the construction, constructing the waved sidewalk. I believe that came out to three thousand dollars. The recommended road name, I say Flounder here. I actually don't like Flounder at all.
I've been fishy about that.
I know. This was actually written before Thad had suggested Blossom, which I think is far more-
It's fine.
You know, is nicer. I like Blossom Circle because it's just a little short road. At this time, the recommendation is to continue this public hearing after hearing from all parties present at the public hearing to a date and time certain to allow for additional review and approval from other agencies and for the board to receive the necessary documentation for the homeowners and conservation acceptance. That is all I have.
Okay. Are there any, any questions on the part of the planning board, Mr. Atkinson, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the town planner's review and staff review, I feel that we have no choice but to continue this hearing. But I think since these people have shown up this evening, that before continuing, before voting on continuing the hearing, we should be able to hear from any members of the public who would like to make any statements or ask any questions, yeah, this evening.
I, I agree. Charlene?
I did want to note one thing. It's not in the staff report. But all the board can act on and, and truly discuss at this point is what is in front of them.
Yes, right.
The what-ifs or the, the future development. It's already been stated very clearly that they're going to have to come back again. A butters would get notified again.
Right.
So it's, you know, the board really does need to stick to what's in front of them this evening. And so I just wanted to, to mention that as well.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
What do we need to do to, assuming it's going to be continued to someday after we hear some testimony? What do we need to do to get the town engineer here to our meeting?
You can ask me to ask him, and why you're asking him. I mean, he'd want to know what it is you want to know.
Well, I, I read his report.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure I totally understand it.
I didn't either.
So I, just, we can talk about it, but that's, you know, I think at some point-
I think it would be fair to ask him to-
Yeah, we seldom do.
Yeah.
Unless we can resolve whatever his concerns may be-
Sure.
-at the time. And I think we have a cut here from the-
We had actually provided this, and I realize there are multiple pages. He was, one of his concerns were the, the profile of the drainage facility.
Yeah.
And we do get deep.
Make sure these folks-
Sorry. The drainage itself does get deep. We actually start at the corner of Periwinkle and Marlin. There's a low point here. There was never a catch basin installed. So we're putting a catch basin in here where our road is starting. And then we're transporting that water all the way to the subject property where we'd be placed within easements. The trouble with that, it's a long run and we do have to put some pitch on the pipe. And the ground doesn't drop down as you head back there.
Yeah.
So that makes all of the piping rather deep once we get to the subject property.
Yeah.
We don't have anywhere at the corner of Marlin and Periwinkle to put that stormwater runoff. And we don't want a puddle at the beginning of the road.
Yeah.
So the only solution that we have is putting in a deeper system here.
Yeah. Putting a what?
A deeper system, the drainage system itself. As long as catch basins are cleaned out, the leaching should last beyond my lifetime. So, so actually getting into the leaching and cleaning that is less of a concern as long as those catch basins are maintained. That being said, one of the least maintained items within a subdivision are people's catch basins.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I have both a, one question for the applicant and then one comment before we get into comments from the general public. The question for the applicant is, of the items that were mentioned that are still outstanding that we need to have resolved prior to our voting, how long do you think it will take to get all those resolved and to get the information to us that we would need before we would take a vote?
I'm expecting by the end of the week.
The end of this week. Based on the list of things, my concern is that that might be very optimistic. And so I think we need to consider that with regard to what date we continue the public hearing to, if indeed we do vote to continue this public hearing.
Yeah.
And then my only comment, Mr. Chairman, is sort of taking off on what Charlene said about all we can sort of consider is the proposal that's before us today. And that if there is any expansion of this proposal and all, that would have to come back, as you had mentioned also. So I would ask you that in addressing the comments from the public, we would ask the public to sort of restrict their comments to the proposal that is before this board today as opposed to the potential future which, future issues which may or may not occur. And if they do occur, are going to have to come back to this board for approval. And you would then have an opportunity to discuss it at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Sure. Is it your representation that your client owns, I'm looking at your plan.
Yes.
The, the piece of property that's designated open space, future phase, seventy-two thousand square feet. Is it your position? Your, your client owns that?
Yes.
Okay. And also with respect to the property to the north, another one that says open one area, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-five square feet. Is it your position? He owns that too?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, that parcel N eight? Oh, I see. It's owner's unknown. Okay. All right. I'm fine. Thank you.
Mr. McFarland? How soon do you think someone will come out with these owners unknown?
That's been, I mean, for the, for the people who are here from the public, that's been our experience. Once property like this gets identified, all of a sudden somebody says, oh, no, no, that was my grandfather's. Right? Over the years, it happens to us all the time. So don't be surprised if-
I mean, you have it everywhere.
And Mr. Devine has, this is his job. He, he looks for owner unknown property.
Yeah.
And he has looked at these two properties and he's hit dead ends in all of the genealogies and he's walked away from them. Had he found the owners and, and acquired rights within them, we may be here, or we may have been here with a completely different plan. As currently, we only have the, the two parcels, basically five acres of contiguous land. And in order to make the development, we, we need the contiguous land. And any property he owns to the north, which to the northwest, he owns a piece that has frontage on Echo Woods Road. We can't combine that with the cluster subdivision because it's not contiguous to this property. Only at one point. That's just not enough.
Mr. Ehrens?
Yeah, it's a minor point, but on your parking, I guess it's the last drawing. All of the proposed lots have a turnaround except for lot three. Lot three, you have to back into the shared driveway for turnaround.
You come in one way and you can drive out the other.
From the garage, the turnaround on the property.
Oh, you'd be driving back into the driveway.
Am I reading it correctly that the only way they have a turnaround is to back into the shared driveway?
Correct. And I'll share that this was a schematic design when we get to the building permit phase.
They're going to be close to that with setbacks and get-
We can be more creative and create something that's a lot more user friendly, yeah.
Just curious, how it might work out.
And a different house shape would certainly help there. Getting that garage a little more centered on the property.
Have a lot of latitude given the size of lots.
True.
So there are, there are a few unknowns.
Absolutely. There are always unknowns.
Mr. Chairman? One of the waivers being requested is the fifty-foot buffer to the, for the two lots, I assume lot one and two, to the south?
Yes.
So is there another, it says minimize or eliminate the fifty-foot buffer? Does that mean that the house could be built two feet from the property line?
We do still have setback required, requirements, so.
There's a minimum of ten foot setback on a cluster development.
Okay. So that's not a non-issue.
Right.
Did you repeat that? Because I don't know where that is.
So that's on the south. So you have lot one and lot two-
Okay.
-where the plan reads cart path. Basically down there, we're, we're eliminating the buffer to- And in all honesty, this is the push from the NH ESP to push the development towards the south and maintain as much turtle habitat to the north in the future.
Any more comments by the planning board?
Oh, sure.
Okay. At this point, then, we would like to turn this over to public comments. So if you, if you would, if you'd like to make a public comment, please stand up and identify yourself. Sign in and speak your piece, please.
My name is Sharon Mitchell. I'm on a butter at four Perry Winkle Way. The road will go in front of my house. I just wanted to confirm from my property line, how many feet exactly do I have to where the road will begin? And the second question is, it looks like part of the cart path is on my property. And I'm not, I don't understand what that means exactly.
If you find out, let me know, will you? We've been looking at cart paths for years. And when, when, I at least, as one member of this board, have never quite understood what, what rights, if any, the cart path creates. And, and we, we see them. They're old cart paths is what they are.
When I went to finance my house, they wouldn't do it because they said there was a road going through my kitchen.
Well, first off, the proposed pavement is going to be nine feet off of the line.
Yeah.
Can, I don't know if Sharon can hear that.
I'm sorry. The proposed pavement is nine feet off the property line.
Nine, okay. Thank you.
The cart path. In the nineteen twenties or thirties, a Herbert Richardson surveyor created two land corded parcels out here, both for Rufus Small, who was, his family was very prolific. And the Rufus Small property at the end of the, or in the middle of the cart path-
Yeah.
-is another owner unknown piece that's actually registered.
Yeah.
When Mr. Richardson created his land court petition. He showed that cart path truncated and it ended up being decreed. And you'll see I have a certificate number listed on here because the land court has decreed that this lot, that we don't know who owns.
Yes.
Has rights all the way to Chatham Road. Mr. Richardson again for Mr. Small created this lot, did not show that cart path going over. Technically, if you don't show it, the land court has decreed that it doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
Except the land court also decreed that it does exist, so.
So it's a cart path to nowhere.
Is that why it's not shown?
Well, there's a, it's severed here, we've located it to one point and we've located it from that point forward and.
But physically, is there a cart path there?
But no, she has a lawn right over it, when a septic system went in, it was plowed over. And she had every right to do so, but didn't. And it's a, a quagmire for the land court to determine someday. We have planned this with the open space. Um, I've mentioned and we discussed at the preliminary that. The cart path goes right through the middle of lot one and we're proposing to reroute that cart path around through the open space. The applicant is more than willing to allow walking rights over this open space to get around Mrs. Mitchell's property. He can't grant rights off of his own property to get back onto the cart path.
Does the, does that cart or the bike path actually exist across Mrs. Mitchell's property?
No longer.
No.
It used to. I thought I, I thought I'd ridden it years ago.
And it's in such bad shape now.
Okay.
It, it's heavily, well, fairly overgrown, it's, it's, it doesn't have trees in it yet, but it has trees and brush.
Okay.
That'll make one day.
One day.
Thank you very much, now we get to the public hearing section of the meeting. Please identify yourself and where you're from, Brian.
Okay, uh, Brian Parity, twenty-six Echo Woods Road. Um, and trying to keep with the spirit of sticking with um, what was presented tonight. Uh, first of all, a point of clarification on the lots that Mr. Devine owns. Um, I did um, a query on the town of Harwich um, website. Um, where the property cards exist. Um, and Mr. Devine essentially owns every lot on the east side of Echo Woods Road. Um, up to the bike path except for one lot where there's already a house on, up there. The, the two lot exceptions are the, are the lots that you see there, um, N eight and, and nine, I think, or N. I'm not sure what the numbers are, but out of the four lots that you see above that Perrywinkle development. He doesn't own two of the diagonal lots this way. Eight and eleven. He owns all the rest of the.
So let's.
Lots there, so just a point of clarification.
Let's, let's continue on Perrywinkle.
Sure.
Regarding the um, open space, a couple of questions related to the open space. We were just in the Board of Health meeting and we heard um, from the gentleman representing the heirs. And Mr. Devine, that the um, plan is being developed. For four-bedroom houses on each of these five lots. Um, and that they were adhering to the ten thousand square foot per bedroom requirement. Um, in order to adhere to that requirement. Uh, the open space aggregation piece was being identified as that open space piece one in the upper right corner. Um, at this meeting, we heard about the NH ESP, uh, the protected species. And if you look on the NH ESP maps, um, the whole area there around Echo Woods is labeled as PH three-five-six. Which is all protected species land, all around Echo Woods. Um, you'd have to look at the map to, to see that. The gentleman all, tonight also said that they were going to adhere to the sixty percent requir- open space requirement. And that they had to aggregate all of those properties that Mr. Devine owns. Um, in the process of, of doing that open space analysis. So I guess the question to the planning board, from my perspective. Uh, there's a couple of questions um, related to this. One is the open spaced, the um, waiver being requested to allow for flexibility. For open space, um, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It's almost like a bait and switch kind of scenario I see evolving here. In that, in that the homeowners are buying their properties with a certain knowledge of open space. Occurring, um, and then down the road, all of a sudden. That open space scenario could and may change for those homeowners. Could and may change for the people um, abutting this land on Echo Woods Road. So my question to the planning board is, or my request to the planning board would be um, not to grant that waiver. That open space as designated. Be open space in perpetuity for this, this, this um, development. And unless I'm misunderstanding here, something here, um, I'm not sure why you would approach it um, any other way. Second question related to open space, and I guess this is related to the um, the homeowner. Association that's being uh, talked about tonight. The open space um, in terms of turtles going through it, et cetera, from what I'm reading. Is this open space needs to be maintained, certain, certain ground clutter has to be cleared, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so the question, it related to the homeowner association would be. Um, are there fees involved in this homeowner association uh, document that would take on. Take on the maintenance of this open space, um, designated open space. I don't believe the taxpayers of Harwich should have to incur costs. For open, for open space that's um, generated, you know, by this, by this subs- subdivision, so. So those are my, my two points um, on the open space. I'm trying to go through my questions to make sure that I'm not deviating from tonight's content.
Number five?
I'm sorry?
You're on number five now, or you finished with item number four?
Number five is really um, from my, from my questions is really. Related to um, future, future phases, so I guess we can hold that until um. Future phases, I guess from the, from the, just from my, just from my own point of interest in terms of this. In terms of this board's oversight responsibility. Um, when you have a situation like this where, where the board understands that um, there's an individual who owns. You know, an aggregate parcel of, combined parcel of land like this. And a butters could be affected in the future and there's requirements from environmental concerns. What is your um, responsibility forward-looking? Um, in these types of subdivisions? Um, we're, we're suggesting that all of this be put on hold until um, the aggregate plan is. A little more fully disclosed so that the property owners on Echo Woods feel, feel comfortable um, with it. Um, so I'm, I'm just sort of curious as to what your oversight responsibilities are.
So I'm, I'm going to let Mr. Atkinson.
Okay.
Yeah, as discussed twice or three times this evening. Any future development or any development beyond what is presented to us tonight would have to come back to this board.
Okay.
For review, public hearing and approval before it could go forward. Would probably also have to go back to the conservation commi- uh, commission and potentially the Board of Health.
Okay.
So that's why we asked that in the public discussion tonight. We limit that discussion to what's in front of us tonight.
Okay.
Because any expansion of that would have to go back through the exact same process. And you would have, you know, another opportunity to comment on that expansion.
So getting back to tonight then, let me go back to my prior question. We heard about the um, open space um, commitment in the Board of Health meeting. We heard about the open space um, requirement from NH ESP here tonight. That the, that the land or an aggregate had to be considered. Um, so given that, that's front and center and um. And it needs to be considered within the approval process timeframe. How much, how much, um, let me state it another way. Is the board willing to make um, imp- imp- perpetuity requirements on some of this open space?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think I'm the chairman. Mr. Atkinson, with your.
We had just discussed that that would all have to come back to the board for further approval. The approval that we would vote on this would be in place, it would be recorded at the register of deeds. Any changes to that would have to come back to us.
So once, so once you get the.
I mean, how many times do we have to explain that?
Here's, here's a, Mr. Parity.
I don't, I don't need those kind, I don't need those.
Hold on, let's, let's, we're going to be civil here.
I was gonna try and clarify.
Yeah, okay, so.
I'm being civil.
Let's be civil.
I am. I, I.
Go ahead, please.
The open space one will remain open space in perpetuity because that's the area that the natural heritage has said. Is the prime turtle habitat area.
Okay.
Pardon, just.
The open space one is open space in perpetuity for the purposes of this cluster subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
The open space future development may be developed at a future time. Provided the rest of the properties are determined who owns them, but it is a future time. That parcel is not necessarily needed for the open space for the um. To meet the thirty percent under the town's regulation. It's there to meet the sixty percent under natural heritage regulations. So by virtue of open space one, I might be off a couple of square feet here. They've met their standard that they need to for the purposes of, of meeting the open space requirement. The waiver that's being talked about, and I think Thad was gonna talk about this anyway. The waiver that's being talked about is for a cluster subdivision. The requirement is that the entire subdivision be surrounded by open space. Because of the um, the, the turtle situation here.
Yes.
Which is a concern, um, natural heritage has asked that the, the development be moved south.
Yeah.
Therefore, the bulk of the open space is going to be to the north with a fifty-foot strip. Um, along the, the eastern part of the properties of lot, I think it's one. So, you know, each lot will have the ability to enjoy the open space. And in the future, if, you know, there's, there's a change, they will have to come back as, as has been stated.
Right.
Right.
But, so for in perpetuity open space, they've satisfied the town requirements. It's the larger piece to the west that is satisfying the natural heritage requirement.
Yes.
So the sti- town is north, state is west.
And east, the state is to the west.
Yes.
Thank you for that, that was very helpful, thank you for that.
Excuse me, all I would ask is that we have one speaker at a time, okay?
Thank you, just um, from my neighbor's perspective, um, if you could just clarify what the thirty percent versus the sixty percent requirement is?
Thirty percent required by the town for open space and sixty percent required for the state. And the, the thirty plus the thirty satisfy the state. Thirty reserved in perpetuity satisfies the town.
We can't, she needs to come up to the microphone.
I just, I would ask politely, politely, please. Mr. Parity, are you, are you finished or would you like to continue? Because there are others that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm done. All I'd like to say is we're here trying to learn, we're, we're not here trying to fight anything. We're here trying to learn and keep our interests. And I really don't appreciate being told that I, that someone has to repeat something for the third or fourth time to me. We're trying to keep it civil and we'll move forward with that, thank you.
On behalf of the board, excuse me, on behalf of the board, I apologize.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I would, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Are we, do we still, do we have any other questions on your part?
I'm, I'm complete on my part, thank you.
Ma'am, if you'd like to step up and, and ask your question, please. Just hold.
Hello, I'm Ellen Keelen, I live at twelve Echo Woods Road.
Yes.
I am in a butter to this proposal. And I didn't think, I thought the whole property over there was owners unknown, so. I um, have been learning a lot in the past few days and I've talked to a few members of the town. Employees like the treasurer and the, and Charlene and the um, tax collector. And I've talked to Thad, I've talked to Bill Devine. So I, I, I would like to understand what the thirty percent means, I'm not, I just don't even know what that's in reference to. In the vernacular it was used.
If, if I might, under a um, cluster subdivision, a thirty percent open space requirement is necessary.
Thirty percent of the total space. Of, of the four point five acres plus the one point oh five acres.
Of the total area involved in the subdivision is required to be open space.
Okay, because clearly I'm not sure how that other space gets to move.
Mr. Chairman, if we're losing a member of the board, we do need to recess.
Okay, I'd like to suggest a five-minute recess until.
Sorry, if somebody leaves, you can't act on the application.
Okay. We're good to go. All right. One more point here from Mr. Atkinson, please.
Yes, to the previous speaker, Brian with your name, I just want to apologize for the, the comment I made. I didn't mean it sort of from a critical point of view. I wasn't criticizing you. What I'm trying to do here is to, you know, help move the, the meeting along so that everybody gets an opportunity to speak, and that people don't get worn out and start leaving because it's, you know, it's getting late and they haven't had an opportunity to speak. So, I do apologize for my comments. I didn't mean it to be critical of you or any of your questions.
Thank you. Okay.
And if I may just interject, I'm more than happy to stay after the meeting and discuss what could be...
The queend's locked the building.
I'm not willing...
I'm getting picked up at 4:00 AM tomorrow morning.
You're all very nice, but I'm not willing to be locked in here.
You know, I, I think, I think this is...
No, actually, there isn't. If, if we had the ability to leave the building open, we would, but, but I, I can't do that, so...
We can go right outside or anywhere.
I really appreciate everyone being patient tonight, and it's a great, this is a great example of how things should be openly discussed. We're not always going to agree, but we're going to discuss them in a civil manner. So, if you would like to continue, please.
All right. I was telling my story about how I've been looking, you know, finding out information about this.
Yes.
And so, one of my questions I asked was, why do you want to have, you know, cluster housing? Compared to where I lived in Connecticut, it looks, you know, pretty clustery. And the answer I received was, well, then you get all the open space. And so, my question is, why don't we just keep it as open space, everything? That would be great, because why would you want to cluster it all together? But I am very concerned about the partial, the portion that is marked open space that's directly across the street from my house. And, and I still, I guess, now I sort of understand a little bit with the, the town 30% and the turtle people 60%, that it can move. But if I'm a person that buys lot one, what exactly am I buying? Am I just buying that little lot, or am I buying that plus the, one of the sections of open space, space?
I think lot one is pretty clearly delineated, isn't it?
Lot one.
Isn't it? It's lot one, right?
So, that's what they buy?
Yes.
So, they wouldn't think that they could go into the open space and build a shed, or...
As I understand it, and I stand corrected if I'm not, I believe it's just the lot.
Correct.
Just the lot, so...
Yes.
And then what would, I mean, right now, this spot is just trees and stuff. Would that be continued to be the 170 feet of, of the way it looks right now?
The open space future phase would remain the same as it is now until something changes in the future.
The issue is access.
And it possibly could become house lots.
It could possibly become house lots in the future.
Is that an okay question to ask, Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I answer that? No, I mean, again, for that to become house lots, it would have to come back in front of this board.
Right, but I'm just asking, okay.
And it would have to go through another public hearing, it would have to go through the Conservation Commission, you know, and if there are issues with, you know, a state organization, it would have to be approved by that. So, for that to become house lots, it's going to have to go through the exact same type of process that this subdivision is going through tonight. And you would have, you know, adequate opportunity to make any comments or ask any questions, you know, with regard to that component and the building of lots on that property, you know, at that time. For now, that would be considered open space, and that would be open space unless they came back to make a change and went through the entire process again.
Okay. Well, I know that the town planner is aware that there's a possibility of four phases of construction in this 22, 28-foot...
Right.
Area. But I didn't know if everybody was aware of that. It does seem to be pertinent to me, but I won't mention that again.
No, no, I mean, there is that possibility, and you need to realize that there is that possibility. But all this being approved and discussed tonight is, you know, the proposal that's before us with regard to those five lots and the open space that's shown on this plan.
Okay. So, we, on Echo Woods Road, it's a private road, we maintain it, we pay for various things that have to be done to it. Since this is going to be abutting it, would the, members that live in numbers one through five, do, do they help us pay for that?
They don't abut it.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Sure.
I mean, that would depend on what type of agreement you have to own and operate Echo Woods Road. I mean, it's a private road, correct?
It says it's a private road here, yes.
Yeah, it's a private road, and the people that live along Echo's, Echo Woods Road, they have deeded rights to use that road, correct?
I do not know the answer to that question, to be honest with you.
I would imagine, yeah, we would have...
I'd love to know the answer to that question.
The simple answer here is no.
Right.
The, the lots, all the property to the east of Echo Woods Road has no rights to Echo Woods Road at this point.
Correct.
So, they have no fee interest, they have no, no nothing.
Right of access, no anything.
Well, we maintain, we do maintain it and pay for things.
So, they won't have, they won't...
No, but as the applicant...
Have any impact on that road.
Right, and as the applicant mentioned, that if indeed there was a future development, they would have to obtain those rights on Echo Woods Road. So, that would be another step that they would have to go through before they could build anything on Echo Woods Road.
No, but the people that live there now pay money for various things to happen. Would the, the other people that have the front, I don't know, I guess, do they really have the frontage, or is it just open space? Would they pay for things that were doing on Echo Woods Road?
The answer is no.
No.
So, the own, the piece of land that's owned by the trust, I've, I spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how these owners have been identified. I have, I have the card from the town for the Nickerson piece, and the deed is not at the town, it just says N.A. I don't know if that concerns your board or not, but...
I, she's speaking to the field card?
Yeah.
And when it's, when you look at who the owner is, oftentimes, there's the book and page, or the land court certificate number, or whatever. There are times where it says N.A. because the land has not been shown on a deed previously.
Correct.
It may be that it just hasn't caught up with the field card.
Yes.
We do have deed references, and you have deed references on the plans.
Just to share, that's deed book 71-260, which is pretty old, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, when I went to look in the town records, it says N.A.
Which it's not, it, it's really not your main...
And simply, the assessor does their best, but by no means are they infallible. They're concerned with a number of items, and they do their best with those. And there are extra items that they add, including the deed references. In this case, it's...
I mean, I suspect that that Nickerson property, they have more interest in than the Robbins property. But the Robbins property is being used for open space anyway, they're not going to try to sell that to somebody. So, when Echo Woods Road was developed in 1984, they had a survey done, it was signed by a surveyor, and then all the members of the planning board signed that they approved the subdivision. I would hope that, that, that you would feel comfortable when you sign that, that the people that say that they own this property really do own it, before you would be asked to sign such a document.
I think, I think...
And then just, can they cut down the trees on that open space?
Open space needs to remain as is.
With the exception of where the drainage will be sited.
Right.
So, on the east side, there will be temporary disturbance as the drainage is installed, and then that will be revegetated after.
So, I would be very, very happy if you would approve this with that open space as permanent open space and not temporary open space.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Because everyone else here has been very patient, are there any other folks that would like to make their, their positions known, please?
My name is David Jordan, I live at 8 Echo Woods Road.
David Jordan?
David Jordan, J.O.R.D.I.N.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, in the review with NHESP, did you only consider the box turtles? Or did you consider anything beyond that?
Box turtle is the only listed species in this area.
The only one?
The only one in this, in this zone, the...
I'm just wondering if they know what a richness of wildlife we have on Echo Woods Road. I have a list here of the things that I have personally seen on my property, and that many of them are also ones that are right directly across the street, which would be in that piece of property we were just discussing. And just to give you a list, deer, foxes, coyotes, rabbits, squirrels, turkeys, box turtles, snakes, skunks, owls, woodpeckers, and many various other, other small birds. Those are the ones that I've seen across the street, because I go into those woods quite often. And then additionally, on my property, in addition to those, chipmunks, grouse, opossums, raccoons, moles, voles, toads, flickers, and hawks.
Yeah.
So, it's a, it's an absolute richness of nature there.
Yes.
So, I don't know how you consider that, but when you're looking at open space and now you try to confine it to just that northern portion there, I think you're missing something. One additional thing, and again, sticking with what we've discussed tonight, there's snow removal is going to be piled on where, at lot three, is that where that is?
Oops.
25-foot or more? Lot three, so that's the one that backs right directly on Echo Woods?
No, no, no.
Huh?
Not at all.
Oh, not at all? Oh, I thought that was...
No.
Oh, all right. Okay, then I'm wrong. I thought it was, I thought it was lot three. Okay. I was concerned that it might be in a position where it was going to run downhill onto Echo Woods Road, because that is higher than we are, so, okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Well, thank you all for your patience.
Do you want to ask the applicant what would be the best date for him to come back for?
Yes, I, I think there are a number of, of issues that are open and, and of concern, and certainly would like to know, Ms. Charlene.
It's Board of Health, it's natural heritage, and it's the homeowners' association. Those are the three outstanding.
Three outstanding, yeah.
About October 11th.
If you feel more comfortable with the month, we'd be happy with that.
I'm not going to be here?
Until?
I'm back on the 15th, so it would be the following meeting after that, which is whatever the Tuesday is, so the 15th, 16th, 23rd of October, is that a Tuesday?
Yeah, I think the 23rd is what you have listed, Ms. Charlene.
Okay. You cheated, you looked at the calendar.
Could I request it be earlier, just because I'm leaving?
No, we...
Sorry about that. Make a motion that we continue this matter to October 23rd.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just one follow-up question. In terms of the outstanding information, you're getting information on the homeowners' association, you're getting information from the NHESPA on the aggregate plan and all of that. How do we become aware of that information?
Check with me. Ellen knows how to find me.
Well, Ellen, Ellen is leaving town shortly, so...
Ellen...
So, can I give you my email address?
My card is out, outside there, absolutely give me, it's better if you notify me. I really don't want to be responsible for trying to remember to notify everybody, because God forbid I miss somebody.
Gotcha.
So, it's better if you notify me. So, I will definitely, we'll make sure you get my card before you leave.
Okay.
That, that's the reason, Brian, I asked that we direct it to, to Charlene.
As long as they understand the protocol.
Yeah, that's good.
We're all new here.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you much.
The motion is up for a vote, right? Continuance?
Yeah, we already voted.
We're done.
We're good. Thank you all very much. I'd like to thank everyone again for their patience.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
We have a report from Mr. Cafarelli. I'll take it home and read it. I, I'm not sure I understand it.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, and it's, you know, of course, we'll, we'll address it when we address this again, but maybe what I should do is just come in and see him.
Okay.
Yeah, the way I understood it has to do with the depth of the French, not French drain, whatever it's called, lead drain. And his concern, I think, was... I'm gonna have to read it again.
Yeah, that maybe we need to make that as a condition? I wasn't that sure.
Yeah, I don't know that it was... Is there a motion, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.